Let me know if you can work it.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Odette Ramos. I'm Representative of the 14th District. I'll be chairing this committee today while Chairman Conway is in Annapolis, testifying on the council's behalf regarding local control. Extremely important, so of course, agreed to fill in. So, this afternoon, we have with the first, well, let me just say, this afternoon, we have with us, here in chambers, we have the sponsor of the bills, Councilwoman Burnett of the 8th District. We have Councilman Cohen of the 1st District, member of the committee. Councilwoman Burnett is also a member of the committee. Councilwoman Costello is absent. Councilwoman Glover is absent. And then also, Councilwoman Porter, a member of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then, from the council president's office, who do we have? Hi. Great. Okay. Preston is here, from the council president's office. And then, representing the mayor's office, is Sophia G. Thank you so much for being here. Today, we're going to start with Bill Number 23-0329, Minor Curfew Conduct of Establishments Penalty, for the purpose of increasing a certain penalty on the operator of an establishment for knowingly permitting any minor to remain on the premises during a certain curfew for minors. This bill was introduced on January 9th, 2023. The sponsor is Councilwoman Burnett, and I defer to Councilwoman Burnett for opening remarks. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and colleagues. So, this bill is essentially amending the already enacted youth curfew law that was passed in 2014 by the city council and signed by the mayor at the time, which, that bill covered a wide range of issues pertaining to curfew for young people. But what we have before us today is an amendment to that original bill that pertains to the section associated with commercial establishments, particularly the fines. In my district, and I'm sure others across the city, have had calls, emails from staff at schools, as well as, you know, people in the community concerning about kids leaving school campuses and going to commercial establishments, whether those are 7-Eleven, restaurants. The notorious place in my district is the Popeyes at the Edmondson Village Shopping Center. But it's not all high school kids. I would flag that when I introduced this amendment to the bill, I got a call from a middle school principal in my district who raised the same concerns about middle school students leaving the campus or showing up late because they were at nearby stores when they were supposed to be in school. And so, what I'm proposing, and, you know, in my instance, I've had a number of conversations with business owners in my district about the curfew law, as already written, about, you know, compliance and that larger context has been working with schools around this particular issue and ensuring that kids are where their parents or guardians are expecting them to be during the school day. And we felt like we needed some cooperation. And so, as it pertains to the Edmondson Village Shopping Center, we went store to store, talking to every single business owner about what the law currently is, what the school was doing to try and keep kids on the campus. And in some instances, we did get some cooperation. And I would note that if you went to any of those food establishments in that shopping center, you would see signage that either my office put up, or our partners in the Southwest Police District put up, or our partners at the Edmondson West Side High School put up. You know, there's been a lot of conversation about this. And really, it's just about safety of our young people. You know, this is not a new phenomenon. When I was in high school, there were kids who left the campus and went elsewhere during the day. It happens all over the city of Baltimore. It happens in other jurisdictions as well. It's not unique to us. But the concerns in my district, which prompted me to propose this, were, you know, sort of feeling like the business community was not being a good partner in that. We've had a number of community meetings over the years that precipitated, you know, or came before any conversation or about the, around the incident that occurred at the Edmondson Village Shopping Center a few weeks ago. This predates all of that. We had a ton of meetings about this. And all of it's been around the safety of our kids when they go to school, that their parents know that that's where they are. And when they leave, they're going back home along the way. And so, we've tried to come up with a number of creative solutions for a few of the schools, but we had just gotten a tremendous amount of resistance and lack of compliance with the current law, which allows for a citation of up to $500 in this instance. So, felt like, you know, we ran out of steam on other ways to address this issue. And so, a number of community leaders came to me prior to and following the shooting at Edmondson, of the Edmondson students, saying, "Look, something needs to be done with this. We, the businesses need to cooperate. There needs to be a distance incentive to continue to serve young people." And I do want to acknowledge that there's a few other aspects of this that do need to be discussed. And so, I've asked the committee chair, both the acting chair and the normal chair, to not vote this out today, because there obviously needed to be a lot of dialogue on this, because it's complicated. You know, I acknowledge that there are some young people who, you know, may leave school early for whatever reason and need to get a meal, or there are young people who, there's variations in bell schedules. And so, trying to work through some of those details is what we're going to use the next few weeks to do, is trying to figure out how do we have something that meets as many of the nuances that arise in this conversation, and comes up with something that we can agree that, you know, needs to happen in the city of Baltimore pertaining to this issue. Because, you know, talking to parents, talking to community leaders, folks just feel like the commercial aspect, the commercial businesses just aren't being good partners in this work, and that there needs to be more done to bring them into compliance with the 2014 law, as well as what we all, I think, can agree that our young people need to be safe in the city of Baltimore. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for putting in this bill. Obviously, I represent Mervau, where we also have similar issues with our young people now that Northwood is open, that they're leaving campus, more so last year than this year, because we put measures in place at Mervau so that they weren't leaving. But that certainly is an issue. I would also posit, and I've discussed this with you as well, and the school system already knows exactly how I feel about this, if we improve school lunches, the kids will not be leaving, okay? So, there's that part as well. And I know the councilman and I are going to start working on that, or continuing to work on that as well, especially since these two particular schools have culinary arts in their curriculum. And wouldn't it be great if we had our young people working on that as, you know, part of the lunch meal? So, that's a different issue, but I do appreciate that you're bringing this to our attention. I'm also interested if you would share the signage that you're able to, that you're putting up in the district, so that some of us can also do that in ours. So, I do appreciate that. Any questions for the sponsor before I go to agency reports? Okay. So, first agency report is the police department. We just got your report a few minutes ago, so if you could go into some detail, that would be, well...
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. I'm joined by Colonel Jones and Deputy Commissioner Briscoe. We do stand by our report, which is that we have no objection to the bill. We do acknowledge in the report that, as the sponsor just mentioned, you know, this approach needs to be very nuanced due to all of the situations that could unfold that, you know, the police or businesses could face. So, we do appreciate the mention of further discussion and brainstorming.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Department of Finance?
Good afternoon, Mara James, representing the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation.
Thank you. Yes, we're trying to collect more money, so, okay. Law Department?
Ms. Shelltoth, on behalf of the Law Department, we stand by our report, which includes suggested amendment, one of two alternate suggested amendments to the language for Article 1934-9, I believe it is.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yes. The bill, as proposed, institutes a fine of no less than $1,000, and that violates the charter provision. So, it could either be amended to, if you wanted it to be $1,000, the "no less than" language could be removed, or if you wanted it to be discretionary, you could substitute "no more than" instead of "no less than."
Right. So, the charter says that we can only impose fines up to $1,000. We cannot do more than that. So, that particular language in the bill at the moment, you know, that pretty much violates it.
Yes.
But your suggestion is if we were thinking about not just doing $1,000, but maybe doing something, leaving it discretionary to whichever agency is doing this, then, you know, we could put different language in. I think what the councilman was thinking about was, you know, we could put $1,000, or there may be some tiered opportunity, but we'd have to be clear about that.
Yes.
But we could say, you know, $1,000, and every day is a new violation too, right?
I believe the code provision always already...
Exists? Okay.
Yes. I think that's in my report.
Okay. Great. Any questions from committee members? Councilwoman, do you have a question?
Did the sponsor want to go first? Ask his question?
He's working on something.
Oh, no, no, no. Go for it.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I did have a particular question, just about strategic planning for this bill. Have city agencies such as BPD consider strategies aimed to alleviate hostility and operations between operators, excuse me, and employees and minors? And the only reason why I say that is because oftentimes, when high schoolers, they go into these types of businesses, it can kind of get really, really tense with the business owner. Have you all thought through any type of conflict mediation and/or strategies to kind of like de-escalate that type of situation? If a young person comes in, the operator tells them, "No," and then they come back, and there are serious public safety issues associated with that.
To my knowledge, I know the district commanders have gone out and had those conversations with those businesses in reference to interactions with youth. We, as BPD, also have a policy on that, 1202, because we realize that we're dealing with young minds, developing minds. So, the idea of having some kind of collaboration, that is a great idea. I think that's something that when we solicit businesses to be on the district commander's monthly meeting, it is something that we can reach out to them to give those, give them that tool to show that there is a difference when you're dealing with an adult. There are some things that you have to overcome as far as obstacles, so we appreciate that input, and we'll follow up with that in reference to you adding this into our tool belt of dealing with the businesses.
Thank you so much, sir. And partnerships that come to mind are like community mediation, and then possible integration within the mayor's office of neighborhood safety engagement that, you know, and I'm going to butcher the terms, but the ecosystem that Director Jackson is talking about, a lot of those entities, such as LifeBridge, such as Family Health Centers of Cherry Hill, they have those life skills approach that are able to kind of bridge that gap. So, it's not necessarily being an enforcement on the minor, you know, a negative interaction with the police department. It is something that is a life and, life skills and teaching lesson.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And then, my next question is, how are the parents held accountable in this type of situation whereby we have minors that are not in the proper place, not in the school? Are parents held accountable in any shape or capacity? And I should say, parents and/or guardians.
Yeah. In this arena, I will definitely say that our partners with school police and working with concentric, you know, have developed some kind of truancy program in reference to identifying those individuals. To what extent on their side, I am unsure of what the follow-up is. I know we're having issues along, of course, you know, with the roadway collaboration that we're having. So, concentric is a good partner in that, of identifying whether the individual child should go back to school, should go back to home, do they need to go to DJI. So, there is some work on their end. To what extent, I cannot report out on.
I appreciate that, because I know just upon, you know, just with my research in previous administrations, youth and young adults will be dropped off at recreational centers, and parents and/or guardians would have to pick them up. And so, it would provide that, again, teachable moment, not only for the young person, but also for the parent, so that they're engaged in that engagement as well.
Good afternoon, ma'am. I can tell you, that's a larger conversation with other partners. To your point, do we have all the tools and resources? I know that formerly there were different programs and different outlets. And I know that some of those things have changed over time, and there've also been some diminished of service during the pandemic. That bears a larger conversation to include other partners. To Colonel Jones' point, I know that Monzi engages with their outreach where young people are concerned. They have a response when there's trauma, and they have response and prevention. So, in that way, we partner with Monzi. But I'm sure that there's more opportunity and room for collaboration, to your point.
Okay, perfect. And then, this question is for the sponsor. The revenue for, the revenue source from the fines, where are those fines going to go?
I think it goes to the general fund.
The general fund?
But we obviously have a conversation about...
Okay.
I think our conversation with law, I guess, initially, if we could send somewhere else.
Yeah.
I believe that the citations, and they've issued citations already, so...
Yes.
On this. But it'd be my understanding, it's the general fund unless somebody from finance says otherwise. I don't know, Mara, putting you in a sleep.
I don't think we have authorization to create something and then put the fines elsewhere. We don't have the authorization to do that. Right? Law Department, Finance? So, if we wanted to put these fines elsewhere than the general fund, we don't have the authority to do that. Right? Right, okay. I mean, we'd have to create a charter amendment.
We'd have to create a charter amendment, okay.
Well, as a follow-up, if, for example, if there's already charter funds, though, so if we wanted the fines to go to the youth fund or something...
That's what I'm thinking about.
Would that be allowable? Since it's already a charter mandated fund that can accept revenue?
Please use the microphone. Please use your microphone. Thank you.
Elena DePietra for the Law Department.
Thank you.
You can't, in the legislation, you can suggest that, you know, when budget time comes, that it be used in a certain way, but you can't mandate the use of the funds in the bill itself.
We just don't have the authority as the council. Like, we could pass a charter amendment at some point that would allow for us to create funding sources and direct them, but we don't have that now.
No.
How would that be, sorry, how would it be different than the increase in recidation tax going to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Because that's what the charter amendment was. The charter amendment wasn't to establish the trust fund. The charter amendment was to allow the city council to create funding sources and direct it. And we only did it for that.
And that's even, that's not always an available route as well.
Okay.
But we won't go into that here.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilwoman, your question earlier about, you know, engagement, would you want to put that in a committee request so that we can get information from school police?
No, thank you, ma'am. So, I want to do a little bit more due diligence first. I understand that there are some truancy programs within Baltimore City Public Schools. My goal is to really understand how those truancy programs are working, how they're implementing in our schools, how they're connecting with our agencies, and more importantly, how we're engaging the entire family infrastructure. So, let me do a little bit more research, and then I'll work with the bill sponsor for additional information.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we had that. Sure. Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all of our agency folks and to the bill sponsor. Is city schools here?
City schools, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes. My name is Kumasi Vines. I'm Director of Career Readiness for City Schools. So, depending upon your question, I may or may not be able to address it.
I'm sorry, could you say one more? I just didn't catch it.
Sure. Kumasi Vines, Director of Career Readiness for Baltimore City Public Schools.
He's here for the next bill, but I'm glad he's here for this one. Go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate you being here. I think some of my frustration is, I see a bit of a pattern where, on an issue like this, it, I really think has to be a clear partnership between law enforcement, government, and schools, because clearly, schools are implicated in this conversation, as well as our small businesses. And with this, and with a few other issues, specifically human trafficking, restorative practices, I need to see city schools a little more present in the conversation. I know that, on an individual level, we all deal with this in our own districts, and I know that the councilman has worked very closely with the principal at Edmondson. I work with the principal at Patterson, my colleague, I'm sure worse with the principal, at Ben Franklin. But just from an administrative perspective, there needs to be more of a conversation and a dialogue, because this is not just an issue in District 8. This is an issue, I think, in all of our districts. We certainly have kids that leave out of Patterson every day, if not most days, and go to McDonald's or go to the restaurants. And so, just from a process standpoint, I would really appreciate if you could take back to the administration that I do appreciate the intent of this legislation and what the councilman is attempting to do. And I think that, in a conversation like this one, it is critically important that our school system be at the table in a meaningful way, because it's got to be all of us rowing together on behalf of our young people. And I haven't always seen that recently with city schools. So, I guess, my concern is, maybe for the next hearing, because I think we're not going to vote this out right now, that city schools administration be present, so that they can be part of this conversation.
We'll make that request, so, thank you. Because it goes back to my earlier point about school lunches being part of this, right, which we've talked about before. And to also emphasize, you know, I work with the principal at Mervau a lot on this. And the school system has been helpful in the safeguards that we put in place at the school building itself. I don't know that that's the right answer, but it's what we could find at the time. At Mervau, we, it has over 100 doors, so the young people were just leaving. There are now alarms on every single door. So, we know exactly who, you know, what's going on. I'm not excited about that. It feels a little jail-like. That's the only solution we had right now. So, I don't think that's a forever solution, but it is something that we coordinated with the school system on last year. So, we appreciated that. I'm still going to go for the school lunches, okay? We have to make them better, otherwise the kids wouldn't leave. So, that's super important as well. So, we will make that recommendation for next hearing.
Yeah. And I just think there needs to be a shared protocol across the school system, not one-offs, not finding individualized solutions in each of our schools and districts, but really, how do we tackle this collectively? Because, you know, to be honest, just putting the burden on businesses, which I know that, in this case, the councilman is not attempting to do, and that he's done an enormous amount of work with that entire community, but that approach makes me nervous, especially when one of the key partners isn't in the room. So, that's what I would request for our next hearing.
And we'll make a request for school police as well, just to have that. Does that sound good?
No, it sounds good. I will definitely take this back to administration.
Thanks.
Do you have any other comments from the administration? I know you weren't prepared to testify on this, but if there's anything else that you all were thinking about, you know, given the situation?
Yeah, well, this is definitely beyond my purview.
Okay.
However, I will say, in the career readiness, we oversee the CTE programs for the city, for the district. And it's a very interesting idea you have about school lunches. But a lot of the work we do for our students to get them work-based learning opportunities and able to enhance their ability to get their certifications and their pathways, and just overall career readiness for all students, engaging with local businesses, and of course, city agency, is definitely something we want to continue to do. So, any way I can lean in into this space, I'm willing to learn more about it and collaborate.
Yeah, thank you. Especially with these two schools in particular, well, Mervau and Edmondson in particular. I know we're trying to do CTE across the board, but we've got CTE right here. So, so, okay. Great. Councilman, is there anything other questions that you might have?
I did have a couple.
Sponsor, go ahead.
So, in the original bill, there on page 7, and this is for the police department, obviously, there's the looming lack of local control in this conversation. However, there was supposed to be reports that looked at a few things, reporting on this. So, essentially, the effect of this, of the curfew generally on crimes committed by and against minors, the number of warnings issued and arrest of minors, parents, operators here under, and other information that could be requested on the curfew law, generally speaking. I couldn't find any record of reporting happening from 2014 on. I'm not saying it didn't happen. I just, I couldn't find anything in the bill file or thereafter. Is the reporting happening on this? Does the department keep track of where, like, what businesses have been cited, like, where citations have occurred, that kind of thing? Do you have that level of detail? I didn't expect you to have it today. But is that, is it being compiled? Are you aware of reports around curfew going out, generally speaking? And is that something, I guess the third question, and this bundle would be, is this something that you'd be willing to commit to doing moving forward, which I think could be helpful? And the reason I'm asking about reporting in particular is, there were, when I introduced this bill, I got a lot of feedback, obviously. Some of the feedback was around concerning about inequity in enforcement, and noting that, like, there may be higher levels in enforcement in Edmondson Village and not so much in Roland Park. It's just sort of, to use an example that I'm sure all of us hear a lot, though you do have some parts of Roland Park. I don't. So, I've told my constituents, like, "Look, I'm only concerned about what's in my district. I don't have Roland Park." But there was just concerns that there could be disparities in where the enforcement is taking place and where it's not. So, I don't know if there's a response. I know that was a lot. But a couple of questions baked in there.
So, BPD does have a mechanism in place where we try to track the truancy in reference to not only businesses, but juveniles. I will say, in the past, it has been lackluster in reference to some of the output from the agency. This is something that we're definitely looking to kick the tires on. But I will also say, in reference to the equity portion of it, you know, BPD is one of the few organizations that does have a Director of Equity and Inclusion. So, this is something that we're always looking at. She's included in a lot of, you know, Director Blyther is included in a lot of these meetings. So, it is something that by, not by happenstance, that we're all looking at to ensure that there is equal law enforcement activity and engagement throughout the city. So, it is something that is very much on our lens. I will say, we know about a few citations that were given in reference to the one establishment, you know, in all transparency, there were some issues with those tickets. There was an issue with who cited, so it had to be recited again. So, that's brought up the issue for us of training. So, now, we're going through the process of implementing the proper training and getting that out to all the officers and supervisors of how and what is needed for the appropriate citing of businesses.
Okay.
Do you have that, the data now that you can give us at some point in time, like for the last year?
Yeah, we don't have it right now.
A, but you can get it?
Yeah, we'll be able to follow up with it.
Okay, so that'll be...
Yeah, if we could have like, maybe two years?
Sure. Back to two years?
Yeah, could we go two years back on just where the citations have been issued so far? I know it's probably few and far between, but if we could just get that data, that'd be helpful to sort of inform the process. The other question I had that came up from some of the constituent responses, and this would be for law, was trying to see if there was a way to pilot this in certain areas? Is that off the back of napkin, something that you think could be done? And if not, if we could get just a feedback, written feedback later on that?
That is not something I looked into. Off the top of my head, I don't see a problem with it, but I, it is something I would have to look into and get back to you about.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, your question is whether or not we can give the $1,000 citations just in certain areas rather than citywide?
Yeah, that was a question I got from a constituent. It's not something that I'm necessarily looking to introduce, but I thought I'd ask that question.
I don't know that we've done that before, so...
They were, so, I think the question was rooted in, like, is there a way to have, like, some sort of distance requirement, which I just think could complicate things a lot when it pertains to enforcement? So, I don't know that we would proceed with this, but I just wanted to get the question on the record, that they were basically saying, like, can we just do this in school zones and leave it, the already existing up to $500 fine for the remainder of the areas that are not in a designated school zone? And so, I said I would ask the question. I know. I know. I see the law enforcement's looking at me kinda like, bro, we're going to get a tape measure. So, I know. But again, I wanted to just throw it out for discussion purposes, to see what kind of feedback we could get on that.
So, you'll be able to get back to us on that, whether or not this could be implemented just geographically?
Just in school zones.
Well, okay, so it depends on what you mean by school zone, right? So, there's the traffic-determined school zone, which is only a few, I think what we're talking about is whether or not it's a school close to a business establishment. And close to, I guess for Mervau, it's about quarter of a mile. For Edmondson, it's right across the street. Colleagues, I don't know what it is in some of your, about a quarter of a mile?
About that.
Yeah, so, but I guess the whole point is, can we apply it geographically? And we can define what that is later, don't worry about that. It's just, can it, can this be, you know, done geographically? And that might bring up some other equity concerns. But, you know, this will help us inform the conversation.
Yeah, I had a constituent with a number of questions that couldn't be here today, so I said that I would raise the questions in the hearing.
And just in listening to the conversation and with the non-verbal cues, you're already raising some of the concerns for law enforcement, the potential for inequity, and how do we actually enforce the notion of a zone if it's not clear signage around whatever this perimeter is and everyone doesn't understand what that means?
Sure.
So, what allows us, for example, traffic, what allows us to enforce it the way we do is that there's signage along the way to define what that means where you are in relationship to the actual ability to enforce. Same would be so. We could not have the loose terminology of 500 feet, well, where is that marked from? Or whatever the terminology would be, it would have to be something that could stand legal sufficiency for us to even execute it. Otherwise, it doesn't do us any good.
No, understood. I think this is just part of the, we're trying to figure out how to.
Yeah, just part of the discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, but we're also conscious of those items, so I'm glad you emphasized the point there. Okay.
Sorry, last question for Kamasi. I know this isn't your shop in particular, but would the school system be able to get us a list of all of the bell schedules for city schools, for all of the schools? Like, if there was an Excel sheet that listed them out? And I'm asking this question, one of the, some of the feedback I got was, the current law, I think it's like 7:30 a.m. to 3:00? There was concerns raised that arrival and dismissal varies between schools. And so, having, you know, 7:30, you know, may be something that's totally reasonable for a student to go get breakfast, because they don't have to be in school till 8:00 or 8:30, whereas some other schools, it may be that they need to be there at 7:30. Same thing on the dismissal portion, I know that a lot of schools have delayed dismissal. And so, having that bell schedule, I think, would be helpful at another part of this conversation, which is like, what should the hours of enforcement be? And should they be reflective of, I personally think they should be reflective of, to capture as many schools as possible in this window, knowing that there may be some students who are legitimately out of school. They have been dismissed from school and then going to the Popeyes is, should be okay because they're not in school. Whereas, that same time period for a different school may be a different thing. And so, what we're trying to do on the backend, my office is trying to work out, like, all right, what does this really need to look like so that we aren't creating more harm for young people who legitimately not, may not be in the building or should not be in the building in that time period? Because I don't think that that was done in the original iteration of this bill, from what I can tell. And so, if you could help us get bell schedules so that we can capture the full picture, that'd be helpful for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
With the understanding that there are some half-days, right? And so, that does complicate the issue? I don't know that there's half, I have an elementary school, or we have half-days, but I don't know that that works in high school, so.
Yes, so I mean, there are many different bell schedules across the district. There isn't, as you mentioned, there isn't one standard, you know, opening bell, closing bell. And there are half-days, whether it's for teacher PD or for other reasons. So, you know, it's a lot of information. So, I will take this back to the district and relay the message that there's a desire for this information to be shared.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have one more question.
Of course, go ahead.
Okay, so for, on the BPD front, sorry, I feel like I'm playing tennis here. For, so the citation is, as currently written, is up to $500. Can you speak to, I guess, what level of discretion? Because I'm sure that this isn't the only type of citation that gives discretion to the responding officer on the amount of the citation? I would imagine like, that, you know, if you're speeding, or there's some range or not, I guess you hit nine, okay. Or is there discretion on the amount? And I guess, how do they make that determination?
No, there's no discretion to the officer to say, you know, I'm only going to cite you for 50 versus, it is what it is in the law.
Okay.
So, the discretion lies in the circumstance of giving the citation, you know, where, is this a first offense, is this a warning? Are we making our business partner, as well as a possible individual, aware of the infraction and being less intrusive by educating the public? And then, for historically problematic issues, are we now raising it to a citation where there is no ambiguity? It is what the law says it is, and that's what the citation is for.
Would it complicate things to have, and this is another question I got from a constituent, I'm trying to get them all on the record for this meeting?
Fine.
Escalation, an escalated citation? So, you actually hit on it, like, a warning, a first offense, and then it's, it goes up. Is that something that the department would be able to execute?
If I can.
Okay.
Not speaking, well, speaking for the agency, but not speaking for the, in my opinion, I believe in progressive discipline. I believe in giving the opportunity to escalate because it shows the ability of, we're more than willing to work with you. So, I believe in progressive discipline and progressive citations to show that there have been previous infractions that now you have reached a level of this. But I am a proponent of progressive discipline.
Okay. I guess we could talk after and figure out what that could look like.
Can I just take you back on that? Is that the discretion of the agency, or is that, do we have to put that in statute so that it's clear? I guess, because it's, we don't have local control yet, you all can do whatever you want. But when we do, what, do we have to be more prescriptive? I don't believe so. So, if we're doing, let's say the law currently says, which it does, up to 500, right? Is the discretion, is the agency allowed to do discretion? Or do we have to be more prescriptive in the legislation as to first offense, second offense, that kind of thing, if we wanted to start?
Right, I'll end the debate, we're giving the law department. You can't delegate to the point where they, they really would, the people on the ground would have to be exercising discretion. They should have parameters to follow so that they're not being too subjective in there.
Is that up to the agency, or we have to?
Usually, that's in the law itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we, we have to be prescriptive in that.
And Madam Chair, I was going to say, and you were making the point, whatever would ultimately becomes are things that have to be spelled out in the parameter. Because at the point that we are executing a citation, it is clearly defined in terms of what we're doing. And to Colonel Jones's point of believing in progressive discipline, that should be something that is very clear.
Right.
On if there is a first infraction. It shouldn't be left to the person discretion because there is a lack of clarity. It shouldn't be, it should be no ambiguity. Because if we have that, then we have the potential for inequities. And so, I just want to be very clear that if that's the direction that ultimately we move in, we want to remove the automatic barrier for potential to create inequities.
Well, I don't think that we envision, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the whoever's giving citation makes that decision on sight. Like, that's not what we're talking about. We were just trying to figure out whether the, or at least, I was trying to figure out whether it's the agency that makes those decisions about what those fines are, or if we have to be prescriptive in the law, which now, we've gotten guidance that we need to be prescriptive in the law. So, okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's, that's what I got.
Okay. Colleagues, any other questions? No? Okay. So, we're going to take public testimony? Anybody in the chamber signed up for this? No? Okay. I do know that we have somebody online. Ms. Washington, do you want to unmute yourself, please? Hi, Ms. Washington, go ahead.
Good afternoon and thank you. Just want to say, I am Ms. Washington, I'm the president in front of Emerson Village Community Association Incorporated. We would like to give testimony today as to how we feel about the citation to store owners and why it should be increased. We assure here, everyone here today is aware of the unfortunate shooting of five students recently at the shopping center. Emerson High School students have been known to frequent the shopping center during school hours for many months now. We have met with school administrators, school coordinators, school police, Southwest District Police, and District Eight Office twice in 2022 to address this very dangerous and sensitive issue. Students have been loitering at the Popeyes, they have been witnessed at the end of Popeyes during school hours, gambling, rolling dice, smoking weed, and loitering through the community. They have been known to be loitering on the church property, smoking weed, and I just got word from another church that they have caught them several times in the rear steps having sex. So, this is why we're finding it very important to cut this off at the tail. Raising the citation for store owners would start to send a message. We have sent letters to corporate, we have made calls to corporate, we have went to the stores ourselves and pleaded with them not to service the children during school hours. A lot of the store owners, their response was, we'll worry about the $500 citation, when it comes, we'll pay it, and this is our means of survival. We are fearful of this attitude because it concerns the primary issue that should concern everybody, including all the agencies, the word is accountability. We are, we all are accountable for the safety of our babies. I believe that if this was set in place back in May of 2022, we could possibly have avoided a young man, Deontay Dorsey, his life being taken. We also want to suggest that we do apologize to the store owners, we understand that this is their livelihoods to support their families. But at the same time, we are tired of many store owners and others coming to our communities and doing whatever they want to do. At the end of the day, any day, you are still a citizen of Baltimore City, and the law applies to you as well. I would like to say thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Washington, for everything you do for your neighborhood and for our city. Thank you for participating today. Is there somebody else that's online that would like to testify? Use your little raise hand function, it should be on the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. Okay, I don't see anybody else, so thank you very much. That ends the public testimony on this bill. We are not voting on this bill today. Thank you, Councilman, for introducing it. Would you like to have some closing remarks before we recess?
No, I mean, yes, I think, one, thank you, Ms. Washington, as well, for joining us today. She's been a big supporter of helping our kids and trying to keep them safe. She's done the work. Her community association has done the work and just looking for partnerships. So, I just do want to thank her publicly for being a good partner on this issue and many issues in the Edmondson Village area. And yeah, I think we've, I think we have, you know, some remaining questions about, you know, trying to get the right thing done here. And so, I look forward to continued dialogue on this topic along the way, so we can get something that works and protects our young people and pushes for more accountability, as Ms. Washington said, for commercial establishments that aren't following the code. So, looking forward to continued dialogue on this.
Thank you, Councilman, for your leadership on this. Look forward to working with you on it. With that, this hearing is in recess. We will go right into the next one. It is, the committee is now going to have a hearing on Bill 22-0256, Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Advisory Commission, for the purpose of defining certain terms establishing the Baltimore City Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Advisory Commission, providing for the purpose, composition, and duties of the commission, establishing terms, procedures, and duties of the commission, and generally relating to the Baltimore City Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Advisory Commission. This bill was introduced on July 25, 2022. It is sponsored by Councilman Burnett. And Councilman, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. So, this bill is a, relates to the bill that we passed a year ago now, establishing the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program. And the things like, you know, we heard this in this committee, so I don't think I need to go through the details, because there were a ton of hearings on that particular bill. But just for the public, the bill would codify the apprenticeship program that has been in, you know, start and stop for a few decades, the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program, for careers in police, fire, office of emergency management. The intention being very similar to the one that we just talked about in that, you know, just trying to create more opportunities for Baltimore City youth. We hear a lot of conversation every day about a lack of opportunities for our kids. We also hear every day about shortages in the Fire Department, Police Department in particular, in trying to find officers. And obviously, I think everybody agrees that all of these departments should be reflective of the city of Baltimore. And so, creating those real pipelines is important. What's also important with this program, and I would, you know, just going back to the old bill, there was a, essentially, what I was hoping to get out of this first hearing was sort of a status update. There was, the implementation for the initial program was supposed to start fiscal year '23, so July 2023. And the intention of creating this oversight board is not only to, you know, have a level of accountability over the implementation over the next few years of this program, but the, also, if you look at the makeup of the members of the board as proposed, it's to also just get, tap into that institutional knowledge, that institutional memory and perspectives and feedback from a variety of stakeholders who all ultimately, I think, share the same sentiments that young people should have, careers in public safety. And executing this program is incredibly important, not only for myself, but Mayor Scott, I know was a huge proponent of this, was in his platform, and something that he has wanted to see implemented for a long period of time. And so, having a, having a level of oversight, thought was important to make sure that regardless of the administration's priorities or whoever the administration is, that there is continuity in execution. A lot of the feedback I got in talking about this program just generally over the years, so not any sort of, not taking shots at anybody that's executing the program now, but it's been around for decades. And so, talking to firefighters and folks in Police Department who've been here 20, 30 years and may have come through these programs out of high school, is they felt that there was a sort of, depending on who the mayor was, who the fire chief was, who the police commissioner was, a variation in the level of support for this program, whether it's funding or staffing. Same thing would, you know, apply to city schools and that, you know, depending on the CEO, the level of commitment to this. And so, I'm thankful that the current school CEO is a big proponent of CTE and that the Fire Department, Police Department have been proponents of career technology education and trying to create these pathways. And, but, you know, the thing that is fully certain is that all of us in this room will not always be in this room. And so, having that oversight and accountability, regardless of who's on the council, regardless who's sitting in these chairs, will set a level of continuity that I think is important for these programs, so that we have generations of young people that are coming through with fidelity in a program that, you know, there's a level of expectation and oversight that remains consistent regardless of who's in charge and who's running it. And so, that was the intention of putting forth this legislation. I've obviously read all of the agency reports, and I'm very much aware that there's some issues with the bill as written, many of them are technical, and I know we're here from the Law Department, on some of the technical issues with this, as proposed. And I'm committed to working through those technical challenges as arisen. So, we haven't asked for a vote for this today, just want to get the feedback on record. I had a few questions prepared about implementation so far, and then obviously intend to work through the committee process to come up with something that works for Fire, Police, OEM, the administration, and Law Department, making sure that we're passing a bill that's legal and that we have buy-in from all the agencies. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, and thank you again for your leadership on this issue, extremely important for our young people and frankly, for our departments, I think, in terms of hiring. So, we'll go through agency report, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Colleagues, do you have any questions for the sponsor? No? Okay. So, agency report. Um, so agency reports, uh, Police Department?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, for the record, I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD, and I'm joined by Colonel Jones and Deputy Commissioner Briscoe. Um, we support the overarching goal of this legislation. We cannot support the bill as written, and we laid out some things that we find problematic in our bill report, um, in detail, and we're happy to discuss, um, in this hearing today.
Can, can you go through those a little bit?
Sure. Um, so there's several things that the Police Department, um, takes issue with in the bill, one being, um, that the advisory board is, um, expected to field and review complaints, um, on the program, which we feel is the job of HR, um, and equity and civil rights. We have a full-time equity officer to do just that, um, and to, you know, ensure that diversity, equity, inclusion becomes a part of our agency culture. Um, and then the breakdown of the composition, um, of the board, we have issues with. One being that most of the voting members are union members, um, and none of them are members that represent any of the agencies that are involved in the program. Um, the other being that, uh, we feel the board would be better suited, um, to include experts in recruitment, hiring and/or youth engagement as voting members. Lastly, um, we have issues with the responsibilities and oversight of the subcommittee. Um, they're not really clearly laid out in the bill, and we just would like some clarification on that.
Thank you very much. Uh, thanks for going through the, that detail. I really appreciate it. Uh, Fire Department?
Hi, Deputy Chief Laura Shiloh. I'm the Director of Education and Training for the Fire Department. With regard to the committee and this bill as drafted, we do oppose it just because of the, the form of the bill. We are still very committed to, um, structuring an apprenticeship program. We don't have that clearly defined as of yet. Um, so we're still working on developing that program. So the Oversight Committee is kind of putting the cart before the horse.
Um, and then your report also says something about, you know, just the, you're concerned about some of the, uh, vagueness as well?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
The vagueness of the language? You were concerned about that as well in your bill report?
That was a concern. Um, and as we know, this was written back in September. It was a concern for chief words. Um, there was some vagueness as to the oversight and exactly, um, what that oversight would be on the, on the, um, programs. And it's also a collaborative effort between several agencies, and, um, I think the vagueness of what exactly this committee would be doing was a concern.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Thanks for, uh, being detailed. I appreciate that. Um, OEM, Office of Emergency Management?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elise Gillespie, Deputy Director at OEM. We stand by our report. As we are part of the Fire Department, we would support, um, fire and the development of the program and work to understand ways that we could feed folks into OEM as a part of an apprenticeship program, but we'll defer to our, our partners at the Academy and HR on this matter.
Okay, great, yes, because you're part of the Fire Department, so, um, obviously hiring goes through that mechanism.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I don't see anybody or a report from the Sheriff's Office?
Uh, they're not included, though.
Oh, I had them written down here. Excuse me. Sorry about that.
We should have looped them in.
We should. It's a good idea. Um, hmm? It was referred to them, but we don't have it. Um, so I would imagine, uh, just, they haven't gotten that part together yet, so we'll, we'll work with the Sheriff's Office on that. Uh, School System?
Good afternoon again. Kumasi Vines, Director of Career Readiness for Baltimore City Public Schools. Um, regarding the, the bill that was, as it was written, we did have some questions about, um, the roles and responsibility of the subcommittee and what our role would be in there. Um, and also, uh, and that's one of the questions I guess we asked for clarity on that. And then also, um, with the youth apprenticeship, a registered youth apprenticeship, we are already under very strict guidelines from MSDE and Department of Labor. So one of the questions I guess we had was, how would this commission or committee interact, um, with MSDE and Department of Labor? Um, but I think, as we mentioned before, oh, you know, at a higher level, this is something that I think we, we are very interested in, in, um, making happen, but there were just some, a few questions that we still had about it.
Okay, great, yes. Uh, just looking at your bill report quickly, there, there were just a, a couple of, um, you had more questions than anything else, really?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Office of Civil Rights and Wage Enforcement, I believe, uh, they are online. Is that correct? Khadija?
Yes, good, good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Uh, we can barely hear you, so get closer to wherever you are.
Can you hear me now?
No. We can barely hear you. Try again.
Can you hear me? Sorry. Is it okay now?
We can barely hear you, but go ahead. We're gonna try to work on some things on our end. It goes, okay.
Khadija, from the Office of Public Rights and Civil Rights. Fully supported.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear.
Okay. Try.
It sounds like your connection is bad.
Yeah, it just sounds like you may have a, a connection issue or your headphones or something. We'll come back to you. Um, Department of Finance?
Good afternoon, Mara James. Um, we stand by our report. We defer to fire and police. I will flag that in our initial report, we stated that we assumed that costs would be absorbed, um, for the subcommittee because as written, it states that members will be, uh, people who have full-time jobs that are directly associated with the program or conducting investigations into the unlawful discrimination in employment and hiring practices. It was flagged for us earlier this week, um, that members on the committee, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development is included on that, and they do not necessarily at this time actually have a full-time push person that is associated with the program or that conducts investigations. Um, and so that would require additional funding for them to be a part of this, to have a personnel to be a part of the subcommittee.
Uh, would you put that in an email or some, or an amended report?
Yeah, we got flagged earlier this week, so I wasn't able to update it yet, but I'll put that together for the committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Mayor's Office of Employment Development?
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Mackenzie Garvin. I'm the Deputy Director of MOED. Um, we stand by our support, uh, excuse me, our report as written, and we are in support of this legislation and concept. Um, as Mara stated in, I believe it's section 29A, when it talks about the subcommittee, it names MOED as a member of that committee. It requires that we have a full-time staff person presently. Our full-time staff people have full-time staff duties, and so we would need additional support in order to execute that. I also would like to note, um, in Roman numeral, Roman numeral one, um, if there's an A and a B, it talks about support for the program itself. And then in Roman numeral B, it talks about conducting investigations into unlawful discrimination in employment, hiring practices. It doesn't differentiate which agencies will be doing such. And I would like to note, MOED could offer support on the subcommittee of the program, but we are an agency that does advocacy. We do not do compliance, and we do not do investigations. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that. Um, and the solicitor?
Good afternoon again. Elena DePietra for the Law Department. Um, the Law Department had several problems with the bill. Um, some of them have been alluded to already today, but, um, for the, the first one is in section 29A dash seven, where it talks about providing oversight to the fire chief and the police commissioner. Um, my, in my mind, and, and I think the definition of oversight was supported, that oversight maybe is a little too strong of a word to associate with the, with the role of, because they could not usurp the authority of the police commissioner or the part of the fire chief with respect to their charter, um, powers or, for the time being, the public legal law powers of the police commissioner. So, um, we would suggest that oversight be, be removed. Um, the, and that occurs in two places, I think, one with respect to fire, one with respect to police. Um, the second issue we have is that it calls for a commission to conduct compliance review, um, and to, to ensure there is equity in employment and training processes. Um, and that we don't think that the commission has the authority to make a decision that the, whether the program is in compliance or not. They don't have that, uh, that would be sort of, it would be a delegation, as we discussed earlier, of discretion to the commission, and there's no standards in the bill to guide that discretion. Um, the next thing is, um, is the, is the subcommittee, um, whose full-time job is, is directed to, is associated with the program. The reference to the full-time job is unclear. Are you talking about the subcommittee itself or the members of the subcommittee? And if they, if so, many of them are already full-time employees of the city, so it can't be doubly compensated if that, so I'm not sure. It, that needs to be, um, strengthened and clarified. Um, let's see, there was one last thing, yes. Oh, and a subcommittee is usually composed of members of the appointing committee. In this case, I don't think it is. It's different people. Um, and, uh, so they're going to be taking action on things that they didn't necessarily hear about initially in the, in the committee itself. Um, and if the committee is, exercises the role of investigating unlawful discrimination in, in employment and hiring, um, this would be sort of a conflict of interest for the fire and police representatives who would be potentially investigating themselves or their colleagues. So that would put them in a conflict position. Um, and, and I think that the Office of Equity and Civil Rights already plays that role. Um, and so perhaps it wouldn't be appropriate to have two entities, um, in the city performing the same thing.
Thank you. Um, just, I have a quick question for the Law Department. So in other sort of hiring and firing disputes, do those go to the, to the Office of Equity or no?
Not usually internally. It usually goes to, the, the initial complaints would be dealt with by HR, I believe.
Uh-huh.
And then, uh, that would be an alternate, um, course of action for, for someone to go to the, um, Office of Employment Discrimination, uh, in the, housed within equity.
Sure, if it was a discrimination issue, then they would go to, uh-huh, or a wage issue.
Right, I think if it was some other grievance within the, the department or, or bureau that the person worked in, I think there would be, and there would be procedures, and it's stupid that HR isn't here because I don't really know for sure exactly what would happen, but that's my sense of it.
No, I, um, that is helpful, um, that there's kind of two, um, types of complaints. There's the discrimination and wage, which would go to the, um, Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and then there's, you know, just other HR issues. Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman, do you have some initial questions for the agencies?
Um, well, I know Councilmen go in and they have questions about.
Do you all have some questions?
Yeah, we can go, you can jump over.
Okay, sure.
I think we have some same questions, so.
Okay. You go ahead.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, bill sponsor. Thank you to everyone for being here. Um, my first question is, how far along have you all come in implementing this legislation? So in other words, just from a data perspective, how, how many, how many young people have been hired into an apprenticeship? What is the status of the creation of the program? What do the pathways look like? Um, just trying to understand, because I know we passed this bill, was it, Councilman, in June? Is that right? Um, so back in June, so just want to know, um, before kind of getting into this next bill, where we are on the first one? Uh, I could maybe police and then fire, if that's all right?
No worries. Uh, when you said apprenticeship, I was deferring. Uh, we saw, as you know, um, good afternoon, Deputy Commissioner Briscoe, on behalf of the Baltimore Police Department. We have a cadet program, um, and that cadet program, and I know that this language here is speaking of apprenticeships, so I want to be very clear about what we already have and what we call it. Um, we have a cadet program and we have an explorers program. I can tell you in, uh, 2022, we did have 340 applications from, um, through the cadet application portal process, um, 110 females, 230 males, of that ultimately resulted in four hires. Um, what we're seeing in that, the challenge of, uh, being able to hire our young people, um, we took a look at some of the, the gaps and places that they were, we were kind of losing them, if you will. It was the taking of the, um, the test. Um, they were not able to pass the test, and we had some that would, uh, wash out through the background, um, investigation. Uh, we're doing some internal brainstorming. We're looking to remove any premature impediments. We looked around the state at what other jurisdictions are doing for their cadets, to get them on board, to be able to, um, hire them between the ages of 18 and 29 months, 21 actually, is where you're considered a cadet, um, because at 29 months, you could escalate to become a trainee going into the academy. Um, so we are looking at to remove some of the barriers that potentially add to some of the reasons as to why we have not been able to, um, hire, um, some of our young people. For the explorers program, prior to the pandemic, we did have at least two districts, Southeast being one, that had an explorers, um, uh, post. We are overhauling that, um, program with the support of education and training, and we're partnering with the Boy Scouts of America to do so. Um, currently, we do have, um, a Young People's Initiative, and I'm not calling it explorers because it's not an official post, um, out of Patterson Park High School. Southeast maintained a lot of those relationships, um, and they're partnering with Patterson Park High School and at least 10 young people that I'm familiar with through the explorers program. So that's where we are to this point. We're not where we want to be, admittedly so, um, but I know we've had some challenges. I've taken over this post since October of last year. One of the things that I did in my evaluations is to say, what is causing us not to be able to, uh, attract, hire, and then retain our young people? We've taken a look at that, and we're working to remove some of those barriers on our end.
Thank you, Deputy. Um, Councilman, remind me again, what was the number we agreed to in terms of the mandate for, uh, the original bill?
I have it in front of me. The language for year 2023 was 10 police cadets. Um, and at present, we have, uh, four, and we're still working to fulfill that. And for year 2024, the number is 15.
Right. Um, I will reserve commentary until hearing from the Fire Department, but thank you, Deputy.
Good afternoon. Jamar Rain, uh, Director, HR for the Fire Department. Um, so in fiscal year 23, we had three persons who actually moved through the program. Um, I will say that all three of them did not make it. Um, same concerns with the, with the Police Department, uh, in reference to passing of the, the tests. Um, so for us, we have national boards that they have to take, and, and it's also, um, internal tests that they have to take. Um, but a lot of our, um, a lot of our apprentice did actually wash out of the program, uh, when it got, when it got to, uh, the national boards, uh, because they were unable to pass the national boards, which then hinders them from moving on to a full-time position. So we're working with, you know, we have a partnership with Baltimore City Public Schools in reference to their CTE program. So we receive applicants, um, uh, we, we've received candidates from them. Um, they go through a, a extensive, uh, program through the summertime, through youth works. Um, I will say now we are working on, so I was hired back in July of '22, um, and since that time, I've taken on the responsibility of implementing the program. Uh, we are working, we're still working with Baltimore City Public Schools, also internally with our agencies, looking to, um, to have additional input from other agencies such as MOED and also Rix and Parks, um, so that we could, um, gather additional persons. Um, it's not, so as I go out and do, uh, career, um, fairs, we have a lot of interest. Uh, it's a whole lot of interest, but when it comes down to persons actually, number one, filling out the applications, um, I, I was at, um, I was at a school the other day and, you know, persons, like, it was really odd to them, just filling out an application. So with the, with the program, we've, you know, decided, you know, we're going, we're helping persons to move along with the program, but we need, we need additional assistance.
Thank you. And so out of that three, how many made it through? None?
Uh, out the applications, I, I was at, I was at a school the other day, and, you know, persons, like, it was really odd to them, just filling out an application. So with the, with the program, we've, you know, decided, you know, we're going, we're helping persons to move along with the program, but we need, we need additional assistance.
Thank you. So out of that three, how many made it through? None?
I defer to our training.
Out of those three, two of them passed the National Registry Test. The third one failed after three attempts at the National Registry Test, so we did have to let her go. The second one, who did pass, she started recruit school, and after a week, she said, this isn't for me. And, I mean, she got to the point where she just didn't show up for work. The third person is in the recruit school right now, he's doing very well, and I'm very confident that he's gonna, he's gonna stay with us throughout recruit school and a career. But we're, we're strictly focused on the EMT portion. We're not, we haven't touched the fire portion yet. That has a different challenge, because there's a medical clearance that comes with that as well. They can't take the fire training without a specific medical clearance. So we're focusing on the EMT portion, it's the harder of the course, and it's required for a position in the department. We also partner with Dunbar. We've sponsored their EMT program through their CTE program. They have a really, really good teacher there, who's certified. They just took their first module test, and out of 13 students, 12 of them failed. And that's the easiest portion of that course. So they will retest, they're remediated, but it's, it's a challenging course. And the courses that we're teaching now, they're, they're college-level courses, they're a whole lot, a whole lot more involved than when I came through 35 years ago. Basic, basic level EMTs are giving drugs, and it's a strenuous course load. So we're looking at different strategies of maybe trying to help them in not just reading comprehension, but math portions, and I know Dunbar had a summer program where they did medical terminology, so that they're prepped a little bit more. So it, it's, it's involved, and the school system has been very willing to work with us. We've, we've partnered with them. So we're, we are hoping to bring in the ones from Dunbar, even if they fail that course, and then we'll teach it to them again.
Okay.
And if I may add to that, Chief Shallow brought up a, a point that I want to kind of hammer down on. Of the 340 applications that we took in, only 28 individuals went further to take the test that's required, and of that 28, only 14 passed. And then from that, we start to lose numbers, because they're not able to do some of the other requirements that, that's required to come through the door. That's why I said, I said generally, we're looking at the process, and at what point in the process, we're introducing different components. And maybe that test, just to get it through the door, is a barrier for us. So we haven't changed anything yet, but we are discussing it as we're looking at what other jurisdictions are doing, but that has been part of our challenge. Because to actually go from the application to the test requires some of the proficiency in reading, comprehension, and math, and they're, they have not been able to be successful there. But we're still, of course, open, wanting to partner where we can, because our goal is to go, to exceed what is asked for us, because we know our young people need employment, and we need our young people to be, to join the team.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you both. I would just say that, to me, the number is four, and the number is one are highly unacceptable, and speak to a profound lack of intentionality when it comes to our young people. We are a city that has a shortage of police officers and firefighters. We particularly struggle with folks who come from within our city becoming part of that public service. And I think the original intent of the council members' legislation is, we have to do better as a city. It does not work to continuously go to other places to bring in folks. We have seen where it creates breakdowns in culture, where it creates frustration among folks who are either being policed, or that some of the folks have to come from within our own city, and it, it's just incredibly disappointing, as a former teacher, to hear those numbers. And I understand what some of the challenges are, but we gotta be able to do this. And to me, it just speaks to the importance of this bill, which I think is both about accountability and making sure we're actually making progress, and that these are priorities, and that there is a board or a body that can hold us accountable, but also about how do we improve those partnerships? Because clearly, something is not working, whether that's a breakdown at the school system level, whether it's at BPD or Fire or all the above, like, it, it, it just boggles my mind that we have 83,000 kids in Baltimore City Public Schools, and we can't get more than five of them into our own public service departments with some level of pathway and intentionality. And so I understand, and heard loud and clear, some of your challenges with this bill, and why there's some resistance to this level of oversight and accountability. But when I'm sitting here, hearing four people and three, and we couldn't even get those three through, I, I just think we have got to do better, and that it is just unacceptable that this is where we are this many months later.
If I may? I, I absolutely, I think we can absolutely agree here, Councilman Cohen. I don't think it's acceptable, but I also think that it is symptom to a larger conversation. People are not joining government, people are not joining police forces. When you look across the national stage, I know our conversation is about Baltimore. We welcome accountability, because we hold ourselves first accountable to the tasks that we're assigned to and to the mission of the agency and the city. But I think it's a larger conversation beyond what is the agency in and of itself doing. It is what are we doing in the collective to ready our young people, to help highlight the pathways, to help build the bridges and the relationships, and to help create anchor systems that help, and relationships that bring them to us and say, yes, we are all ready. We want that. So I know that the bill has some challenges in it, we've read the bill report, but I don't want to, to move away from the fundamental ideology that we agree, we want our young people to join the team, and we also want our relationships to highlight the opportunities that the team offers.
No, and Deputy, I appreciate that point and agree with you that we have a profound challenge in this country at getting our young people into public service paths that, for whatever reason, police especially, but police, fire, EMT, even city government, has become toxic, in many cases, to our kids. However, that doesn't mitigate or in any way alleviate our responsibility as the adults to be the ones that create that bridge. I was at a high school this morning, and our young people are so curious, like, they asked such good, deep, thoughtful probing questions about my job as a city councilperson, they asked about police and fire. I mean, there's a gap here, and I think what I'm interested, and I know the Bill Sponsor in trying to figure out is, okay, let's agree that across the United States right now, it is not sexy to be a cop, it is not sexy to go into local government, it is, these are hard, underpaid positions that require a lot out of people, that have become increasingly unpopular in the public's eye. I think we take that as a given and completely concede and agree on that point, but how do we then build it back up? Because just saying it's, it's difficult right now doesn't cut it. And I do think that we have a lot of young people who, if we show up and challenge them, will take us up on it. And so I guess what I'm still struggling with is, where is the missing piece? How can we move those young people along? And I think that you're right, it has to be on all sides, it has to be all of us reaching back more intentionally and pulling our young people and showing them what is possible, and that these can be great careers. You know, they're, they pay, you're not coming in here to be rich, but, you know, it's a good middle-class life that you can get. But I, I think that's the piece that still feels broken, and that's why I appreciate this legislation, is that it just feels like there needs to be more structure and effort and intentionality at bringing our school system and our other public service agencies together, because right now, there's a missing link.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you. So following up on that, following up on that, the question and also the commentary, I want to really understand, from a testing perspective, is it, they can't pass the test because, like, reading comprehension and math, like, so is that one of the main issues?
Yes, ma'am, that's a really good question, and thank you for that. Yes, they're not able to, and I don't know what the numeric score is, so if the hypothetical, if the numeric score was 70, they're falling short of the, they're falling short of it. So that was why I made the statement that we're looking at evaluating internally where we place the test. Like, is it more prudent for us to get them through the door after we do a full background at 18, and then work with them to be prepared to take the test? That their skills match the ability to pass the test?
Yeah, so the only reason why I ask that is because, you know, having been a STEM graduate, having significant challenges in math, I was able to graduate with, like, multiple science degrees, and one of the things that really helped out was having that tutelage that kind of went, you know, really just processed how I, I mean, not really processed, but really worked through, excuse me, how I process information. And so one of the things that, you know, with this commission, I'm hoping that we have a conversation about some of the academic, the ancillary academic organizations that can help out and support the testing strategies that you all need to kind of build up the people to take those exams. Like, you know, I, I know, you know, Councilman Cohen, you speak as a former educator, I speak as a person that, you know, has gone through testing anxiety, what that large test looks like, taking a national board exam. You know, those are the types of things that, those kind of social behavioral components to this test and to this commission, to this particular bill, that I think we are missing here. Like, you know, Baltimore City Public Schools, you know, you all are kind of doing in the classroom, and in, in the classroom instruction. What I am talking about is the added factor that kind of alleviates some of those items that, you know, when you're going to take those national boards, you have that training, similar to what we're seeing with, you know, persons of color with SATs, ACTs. We are seeing those types of issues whereby persons of color are not able to take the exam because of those social behavioral components that are, no offense, Baltimore City Public Schools are completely missing from the academic tutelage in most jurisdiction curriculum.
And to your point, ma'am, that would be an outstanding support, not just for getting cadets, for actually getting individuals to join the profession, because we see a huge fall off again, even when you're taking that test to become a police officer candidate. It is the same challenges, and age isn't the barrier of it in and of itself.
So are, are those types of organizations a part of this commission? One of my questions was, you know, the overall makeup of this commission, have we determined who's gonna be on this commission?
There's, there's language in the bill, I mean, we can obviously look at it through this process.
Page five of the bill.
Yeah, what folks are missing, or maybe missing, I think we've gotten some feedback today about some skill, additional skill tests that should be represented on the board and willing to work through that.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. My second question actually kind of goes into what Councilman Cohen was just talking about, you know, just the levels that we are seeing, 83,000 students that are in Baltimore City Public Schools. I'm wondering if there can be some sort of partnership with Moed. One of my kind of trajectories as I got into healthcare was doing kind of like internships and like phlebotomy, you know, so you're already, you know, from a, from a healthcare perspective, you're already kind of getting into the vein of what, what would it look like to calculate, you know, medications? That, that's a very hard skill. That takes intense practice, it's very heavy, you know, if you get it right or if you get it wrong. And so like, I'm wondering if we can partner and/or adapt some of our high school programs into this pipeline, so that we're not only starting earlier, but we're starting from a place that not only gives them a career trajectory, but also would build capacity within employment services to kind of triage into this program as well, the apprenticeship program as well.
So hi, I'm Matt Garvin from MOED. I just wanted to acknowledge my, again, my colleague Kumasi Mines from the Career Technology Education Office in Baltimore City Public Schools. We have a great relationship with this office, and we do similar type of work, as you're speaking to, and he can speak a little bit more on it in detail. Some of the work that we do is through Youth Works and the CTE program, if you want to talk about it, Kumasi.
Yeah, absolutely, and it all ties also to the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program. So with the youth apprenticeship, it's 450 hours of hands-on experience, and then 125 hours of related instruction. So in partnership, of course, with the Fire Department and Moed, we're incorporating Youth Works during the summer to help the students obtain those 425 hours. There's potential opportunities throughout the year, the school year, of course, and then the following summer as well, to accumulate those 450 hours. So a lot of, and this is not in, you know, to say like, what the questions that are being asked, or the, the level of not being satisfied with some of the results thus far, this is not in the rebuttal of that. But I did want to highlight two points. One, these are, for EMT, these are college-level courses. It's tough. But what it highlights is, to your point, you know, we can do better in preparing the students to be able to take those tests, still understanding that folks are taking this as they get their associate's degree, but still preparing our students to be able to take that test and pass, and then have the other support from the community, from the Fire Department itself, from internally. An example of that, as Chief Shallow mentioned, was the medical terminology course that we had last summer, I believe it was the first time. So the last two summers have been the first two summers, or the first summers of us doing CTE programming instructional during the summer. So, you know, it's a slow progress, but we are learning of how can we provide these additional supports? And one of the lessons we learn as we develop our strategic plan, and we probably all know it, it's difficult to start marketing a career potentially for the rest of your life as a 17-year-old. What we realize is, it starts way younger than that. And I know both the Police Department and the Fire Department have been very open to coming in younger, talking to the students fifth grade, uh, fourth grade. I always make this reference back when, I'm sure my age now, but there was officer-friendly kind of thing that made me want to be a police officer for a little while, you know? And then the, we are really relying on work-based learning experiences, whether it's internships, ideally apprenticeships, and then the exposure awareness opportunities to help build that long trajectory of students experiencing, getting to learn, and then making choices. And I often say to employers, at the end of the day, once our student get their CTE certification, once they graduate, we want to prepare them to have options, and with the employers, it's an opportunity to start marketing why the students should, should join your career path. So, I mean, you know, I think this entire process has definitely highlighted struggles and opportunities, and to the numbers point, of course, we would love to see more numbers.
And how many, oh, I'm sorry, so go ahead.
Again, Jamar Rain from the, from the Police Department. So I will say that part of the discussion that we've been having internally, because we know that a lot of the youth are unable to pass the, either our internal test or the national test, is, you know, with the framework that I'm developing, is having tutoring for our youth, again, working with Baltimore City Public Schools, having mentorships. So one of the things that I oversee is the Community Engagement Team. It's about 50 persons who were in the fire service who are willing to mentor our youth, so having two to three mentors per youth during the school year, during the summer, teaching them life skills, teaching them fire service skills, because we understand that a lot of our youth don't necessarily learn from reading a book, especially at that young age, so we're making it so that they have hands-on experience, and also just basically, basically teaching them life skills and helping them to become a well-rounded individual, rather, rather, if they decide not to go into the fire service or to go someplace else, but we want to teach them the life skills that they, that they necessarily, that they need. Yeah.
No, I appreciate that, you know, a few programs that come to mind of like, who is doing this best? I mean, just from a healthcare perspective, UMD Cures has a large proportion of high school students that are interested in the medical career, going on to medical school. I'm wondering if there can be some sort of partnership there, that, you know, if, if I had to. if, if I had to do it all over again, I would do something like nursing, EMT, x-ray technology in order to pay my way through college. So really thinking through creatively those types of large organizations that are already have that, you know, that already have a large quantity of like healthcare professional students that are really interested in being there. And that may serve as that pipeline and that, quite frankly, given the student loan debt crisis that carried, for you to actually continue with that, with that, with that healthcare career, leading all the way through to, you know, our, and nurse practitioner, EMT, physician. So they do have some sort of trajectory going forward. So that's a partnership there. I wanted to also ask about the numbers from the Youth Works program. How many of those students every year are completing that program? Particularly if those 450 hours that you're, that you're talking about?
Yeah, I think that's specifically about the number of youth that are currently in this apprenticeship program. And I believe cohort one, and I'm also going to ask Chief Shallow to correct me if I'm wrong, cohort one kicked off last summer with four, and they were all, that, this is the Dunbar students I think you were referring to, maybe a Patterson. And cohort two, cohort two is kicking off this summer and we're looking to increase. And that is also through the Youth Works.
Okay, I'm making the connection. I thought there was, I thought there was a disparity between the number of people that were in the Youth Works program for this, for the, you know, 450 hours versus those that are, so they are the same number. Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Great questions, colleagues. I had a couple of questions, but I see that Ms. Farahmand is back on from Office of Civil Rights. We're going to try again. You should be able to go ahead and unmute. Is she able to unmute?
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yay!
Hi, good, hi, good afternoon, everyone. I apologize. I think that I have, I have some technical difficulties. I hope everyone can hear me okay?
Yes, thank you for being here. Go ahead.
Of course, of course. Thank you. We fully support the program, but we definitely oppose the bill as it's written. And we request further information regarding the role of UECR in the subcommittee. And I think there was some, uh, some, we need some clarification as to the, its rule within the subcommittee. So we request further information from the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Did you have any questions for Office of Civil Rights?
No, not for the, I did have some other questions.
I did have a question for Office of Civil Rights.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. How, yeah.
Ms. Farahmand, are you still there? We have a question for you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
How will recruitment and engagement efforts be tailored specifically to the LGBTQ youth in Baltimore? Some of the issues that I'm seeing with, you know, partnering organizations like Baltimore Safe Haven, there, there's another group of people that are in type of those, you know, not formalized emergency settings that could provide that type of creative kind of partnership between the youth that they are serving with this program as well. They are in need of housing. They're in need of employment. They're in need of all those different things that, and they also have a, a different level lens, quite frankly, towards LGBTQ youth. And so I think that is something that can be engaged with as well. Office of Civil Rights, have you all engaged with them at all?
Can everyone hear?
Yeah, go ahead.
And if you can't hear me, it's okay. I can follow up at a later date with Director Moore. But I just want to make sure that we are not only including the cultural component, but also sexuality and how recruitment can influence your, your lens into healthcare and/or public safety in general. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. And that goes also for, you know, our Latinos and other groups in our city that, you know, we fully want them to be, feel welcome as part of the city. And they, you know, my community wants to serve. So I think that we want to make sure that we're open to those as well. And I have a lot more to say about that, but that's a different hearing. So the, the other question that I had was, it sounds like the department is trying to be intentional, just, it's trying, and there's obstacles that are coming up. It sounds like there's actually a need for some kind of coordination and coordinating entity that just sort of says, okay, everybody come together and figure this out, which is, I think, part of what we were trying to go for here in this particular, I mean, it's the oversight piece, which we just found out that we can, Office of Civil Rights can help us with, but, or in terms of any complaints or anything else. But the, the oversight and the coordination is something that is very clearly needed. And so, Councilman, do you want to sort of comment on that as well?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's the intention. And that's where, when crafting this and speaking to not only the conversations that we've had offline around like, there being, on the previous bill, there being issues with like, who's in charge? Is it fire? Is it police? Is it OEM? Is it school system? Who has the authority to make the other partners do things? Or still weren't really, aren't, aren't able to be addressed in, in this way because we can't really put one on top of the other. However, we, we saw this as sort of the next best thing to have a oversight body or a commission, whether it's using the word oversight or some sort of accountability body, to not only provide, in the same way that like nonprofits have boards, corporations have boards, where you staff those boards with, you know, folks who have some level of work experience, lived experience, areas of expertise to help execute programming, is sort of the intention in this, in that like, there are a lot of moving parts when you're trying to coordinate between multiple agencies and the school system, that there's, you know, folks that are representative of these, these particular industries that are giving feedback or, or holding folks accountable to the metrics that we agreed to in the previous bill. And as far as like the hiring, the minimum hiring standards and execution of the program. So that was what this was for. And then also just providing that just sort of guidance. I mean, just an example, I spoke to a member of the Vulcan Blazers who was like, look, I'd like to do more with this program in particular, and we feel boxed out. Whether that's true or not, you know, I'm not trying to make accusations here, but regardless, that's just sort, sort of the feeling. Whether that's true, again, I see heads nodding one way or the other, but that's, you know, the, the feeling is that there, once, the folks that have experience have come through these departments, may have come through a cadet program, want to give their time and expertise to seeing the execution from both their experience in working in the field, but also potentially coming through a cadet program or explorer's program previously. And so they have valuable feedback and lived experience that any other entity outside of, you know, government operations would normally have some level of oversight and folks in, in that experience. So that's what I would say is, the root of this is not to have, you know, some boogeyman telling you guys what to do all day, but, but just sort of a entity that can convene, that has that big picture, 3,000 square foot perspective or feet perspective on how it's going, and, and also just being able to tap in into their networks and say, maybe, you know, it may not, you may be working in a few schools, but perhaps there's relationships that folks on this commission may have with other schools that, or kids, or programs that can feed into this in a, in a real, really substantive way. So that was the thinking behind it. Obviously, we can work on the technical, technical nature of what we're actually asking this commission to do, and I'm willing to work through that.
Great. My other question was about how are the cadets that, you know, we've, we've had cadet programs in both departments. I have a constituent who went through the fire one, and she actually became an, one of the drivers. And she was doing really well, but then felt like she wasn't supported. She wasn't treated well. And now she's driving an ambulance for a private company and making a ton more money, but she didn't want to do that. She wanted to serve. And so what are the things that we're trying to do internally to help to support the ones that we certainly, that we currently have? Because as we get more cadets and more apprentices in these programs, they, they need to be supported. Obviously, they're coming in from a different angle than, than who we normally recruit, but I think that there's got to be some, some support so then we're not losing them. So have you all started, as you're thinking about doing these programs, have you started looking internally also at how the current programs are, you know, can be improved and, and the supports that are given?
So I will say that we are, we have not indefinitely looked at that. One of the things that has come to mind is that for the persons who are serving as new recruits, having mentors for them. So as, you know, as they begin their career, now number one, they're already in the academy for a few months already. They have the, those persons in which they look up to. But once they actually go to the actual firehouse, who's actually mentoring them? Who's actually helping them to learn more about their job, the culture of the job, and just being happy while they're here? Because understandably so, we want to make sure that we're keeping the people that we're bringing on because there's a cost to even bring them on. So we want to try to keep them as much as possible. So I, we have not indefinitely looked at that, but that is something that we're.
So you'll be looking at that, though, in the context of, of being able to develop this, this, you know, because we're asking you to do more in terms of the apprenticeship. So we've got to make sure that we're retaining also, you know, who we have.
Yes. And that's, again, so that's also part of the apprenticeship program that, you know, the framework that I've already have is having the mentors. So they, you know, they would have mentors while they're in the program. And hopefully, you know, because they're going to be in the program for a couple of years, those relationships will build and they will, they'll form lasting relationships as they move forward into their career.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm, Mr., Councilman, you want to go ahead and ask your question?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So for the, well, it was, it was noted that there's a, a, for, I don't know if it's fire, police, or both, someone threw out a number of 400 hours or so of curriculum time. Is that accurate?
That's fine. So I think that was, Kumasi had mentioned that. What we, we were approved as a, a site for the youth, Maryland Youth Apprenticeship Program through the Department of Labor. And this gives students the ability to also get credits in school while coming and working with us as well. So it's a paid apprenticeship over the summers. It's 450 hours to complete that Department of Labor state apprenticeship program.
So how many months do you think that?
We've, we just discussed that yesterday. One year. Think it has to be done within 14 months. Has to be done prior to them graduating. And 125 of those hours have to be instructional.
Okay. So then how, how could it be possible that this, so this program was supposed to begin in September of 2022. How could it be possible that three students have come through already?
It's, that's completely separate. We have four students who came through Youth Works last summer.
Okay.
They did the summer. Those hours are going to count towards this apprenticeship. Those four will also come back this summer after the school year. We're hoping to extend the normal Youth Works from the four and a half, five weeks to the whole summer. So that's something that we just discussed yesterday and trying to figure that part out.
Okay. But I, I would say that the numbers reported earlier would not, so the number would be zero, the number of students that have come through this iteration of the program. It sounds like these students were already in before July.
They would have been.
Yes, they would have been.
Right. So the mandate for this bill was that in the first fiscal year from July '22 to July '23, that there would be 10 that were, completed the program essentially, or come through and been cadet, hired as cadets. So at this point in March of '23, we'd have zero.
No. So what I would say, our partnership with Dunbar in sponsoring that CTE program of study, there's 18 seniors. And we're hoping to, to hire them as community aides. So that's 18. It's not in this formalized apprenticeship program as written in that ordinance, but we have 18 kids that we are looking at bringing in.
Right. No, I hear you. I'm just saying, for the fidelity of the bill, there, I, I just, I think this is sort of the challenge in why we have, why I propose this like oversight piece, is that like, counting folks that are already in the program towards the numbers of this program isn't really the intention of what we were trying to do and what we set out to do. The point was that in that first fiscal year, there would be not necessarily a double counting of kids already in the pipeline, but new students coming into the program and filtering through in that, in that, that time period. And this is why we wanted this, is because it, it sounds like there's some ambiguity around like how we're tracking students and it's sort of, as it pertains to the code as signed by the mayor. And, and so I think that this sort of, again, speaks to why there needs to be that oversight. So we're all just sort of marching to the same beat. And mainly because there's reporting requirements in this bill. I think if the public needs to know what the efficacy of this program is, if there's changes that need to be made, what those things are, then what we have in that report needs to be reflective of the intention of the law. So we know we're all on the same page. I think you guys, he has nine, I think you get what I'm saying. And so I, I think, that, so that piece. The other thing that I would ask is, what the, the outreach strategy has been, there's been a lot of conversation about partnerships with a particular school, but there's nothing in this bill that precludes fire or police from working with any school in Baltimore City, whether they're public, private, charter, as long as they're in the school, the city's boundaries. Are we doing outreach beyond the, those, those, the schools that have been named so far?
So yes. So I formerly worked in higher education before I worked, started working for the city. So I have my partnerships with the other universities, universe, I haven't tried to form with Baltimore City Community College, but more or less Morgan, Towson University, but also some friends who actually are principals and system principals and above Baltimore Public School System, of trying to bring those folk on, trying to more or less be invited to their career fairs, so that they learn more about the fire service. Because understandably so, everyone who's going to school in Baltimore City may not go to college, they may need a career. So just offering that service to them so that they know that the fire service is out there. So I think for the month of March, I have eight middle school, elementary, middle school, and high schools that I'm, that I'm going to, so that they understand more about the fire service. Precluding, you know, Patterson, Dunbar, those that we, we already have relationships with, trying to form more relationships with, around the city, rather than, you know, just the small pot that we have, so that we can gather more people.
And if I can. Murville has a nursing track.
Yes.
Just putting that there.
Yes. It was Murville, so one of the, it was Murville, and then it was also another school. So I have, I'm going to Murville in a couple of weeks, actually, for their career fair.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
If I can add just a little bit additional context. So I think that the two schools are mentioning so much because we have really, really strong fire EMT, CTE pathways already there. And I guess a little more context as well, like, so I think I definitely understand you, what you're, what you're saying regarding like when this bill went to effect. But I, I guess I'll want to highlight that I think this, it's a positive sign. I'm taking it as the relationship that we've built with, especially with the, the fire department as we were already in talks. Oh, I'm sorry, already in talks and conversation about building a youth apprenticeship. And just another point of clarification. So with the registered youth apprenticeship that we work with MSD and Department of Labor, there are a lot of strict guidelines. And since we already have those existing strong fire EMT programs at those two schools, the related instruction is already there because they're already training to become fire EMT. So in other words, and I think we're learning on how possible ways to do this, to expand it to additional schools, but since it's a credit-bearing CTE pathway, it's not automatic to spin up another registered youth apprenticeship at additional schools. But I do know there's a desire to expand this opportunity for more of our students.
Last question. Who, and this is for fire, police, OEM, who are, just for the record, the staff that's, because when we, we talked about, when we were working through this, the original bill to establish the program, there was a lot of back and forth on like implementation dates, the need to hire additional staff in fire and police to oversee. So where are we with having a person in charge of this, you know, it's, who's in charge in fire, who's in charge of police, that when we continue these conversations, we can be tapping, tapping into and also just know that this is the person that we need to call in, in each department to inquire about the implementation of the bill?
So I am the person who's in charge of the, the implementation and also the framework for the fire department. I know that I've been in, in talks with others in regards to forming a collaborative effort so that we're not duplicating, so that we're working together. But for Uh, but for, for right now, I'm the, the, the person.
Perfect.
And I am your person, uh, for this bill, and I know you recognize that we, uh, both have a hierarchical structure, so I'll be including, uh, Major Burkis, who's responsible for recruitment, uh, and recruitment of our, um, cadets as well.
Got it, okay. And you, oh, you're right, fires, yes, makes sense. Okay. And obviously, I know Kumasi, well, the city school said. Okay. Uh, that was the last of my questions, Madam Chair, for now.
Uh, Councilman Porter, do you have any other questions? Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any other questions. Uh, Councilman, thank you for your leadership on this. I, I actually think we came to a consensus on the next, you know, few steps, so I'm, I'm grateful that we had this conversation, um, as well. Um, so do you want to, uh, conclude, uh, put, uh, do some closing remarks and then I'll thank everybody?
Yep. Um, well, and thank you all, uh, for joining us today. Um, and I'll be reaching out. Call for testimony, yes. Uh, before testimony, uh, thank you all, um, for, for this, for the commitment to young people in Baltimore City. Um, and I look forward to continued conversation about cleaning up some of the technical issues that have been raised today, uh, and I'll work with the chair. Once we have amendments, we'll work with the mayor's office and the agencies to, to walk through to make sure they're in alignment, uh, with the feedback that we've gotten today and in your agency reports, uh, so that we can put something forward that actually works and that is, fits into the charter, uh, and is well. So, thank you.
Uh, so we do, um, want to offer public testimony. Um, I don't think anyone in the chamber has signed up, uh, and we didn't have any signups outside. Uh, anyone online want to testify? Please use the raise hand function, which is at the bottom, uh, right hand of your screen, as if you're looking at it. Okay, I don't see any, um, public testimony or anyone wanting to testify in the chat. Um, again, Councilman, thank you for your leadership on this issue. It's extremely important, as I think all of you can see, that, uh, this is important for this committee, um, as well, that we get this, um, that we, that we do this in the best way possible for our young people. I want to thank you all for everything you do, but also for your time this afternoon. Uh, we will recess this hearing and see you next time. Thank you.